Ready Shannon? Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military at home and abroad and for their families? Thank you. Clerk Samino, may we have a roll call, please?
Council Berica?
Here.
Council Flaherty?
Here.
Council Hume?
Here.
Council Mackin?
Here.
Council Maglio?
Here.
Council O'Brien? Council Reynolds?
Here.
Council Ringus?
Here.
Council Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. We do have a counselor participating remotely this evening, therefore, all votes will be by roll call tonight. All right, starting off with announcements, we have several announcements this evening. First, I want to say thank you to our now former police chief, Mark DeBois, for his service to our community. Chief DeBois retired from Braintree last week, but his leadership at the Braintree Police Department will go on, I'm sure. So, on behalf of the council, we wish him the very best in his new endeavors and with great appreciation for all he did for our community. Next, we have an announcement from our town clerk, Clerk Jim Casey. The town clerk would like to advise all Braintree voters that the tentative preliminary town elections that were scheduled for September 19th, 2023, will not be held pursuant to Section 7-3(c) of the Braintree Town Charter. Not more than two statements have been filed with the town clerk for the office of mayor. The candidates whose statements have been filed shall be considered to have been nominated and their names shall be voted upon for this office at the succeeding regular town election. And that regular town election is scheduled for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Those considering running for any of the other elected positions, that's counselor-at-large, district counselor, school committee, library board of trustees, electric light board, and housing authority, please visit the town clerk's office to find out how to get your name on the ballot. The last day to pick up nominations papers for the November 7th election is Friday, September 15th, at 5:00 p.m. Applications to vote by mail for registered voters who want to vote by mail for the November 7th election are available online, or you can visit the town clerk's office here at Town Hall. The last day to register to vote for the November 7th election is Friday, October 27th, at 5:00 p.m. So, please, if you're not sure if you're registered to vote, you can also check with our town clerk or the Secretary of State's website. The town clerk's office, I'm going to read the phone number, it's 781-794-8240. And again, that is our town clerk's phone number for any election information you need. All right, next, please save the date, we have our Sixth Annual Community Heroes Awards, sponsored by the Braintree Community Partnership. This is always a great and uplifting evening here in Braintree. It's going to be Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. right here at Cahill Auditorium at Town Hall. Everybody's welcome to attend. Any other announcements? Counselor Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. The Delta Lodge is hosting a back-to-school drive during the month of August. They're accepting school supplies of all kinds, and they can be dropped off at the lodge on Monday evenings between 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Or you can call 508-649-8125 to arrange the drop-off, and the drop-off is at the Delta Lodge at 403R, Washington Street, Braintree, Massachusetts. And I also want to announce that the Nelson Chin Third Annual Memorial Golf Tournament, I did previously announce that this was set for Friday, October 13th. We will be opening up the golf registration this Sunday at 5:00 p.m., which is August 6th. So, golfer registration will open up. You have to send in your registration. Email thenelsonchinmemorialfund@gmail.com. So, that is the only means that we are accepting golfer registrations. Again, it opens up August 6th at 5:00 p.m. Email thenelsonchinmemorialfund@gmail.com. If you have questions, you can also email that address and somebody from Nelson's committee will get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hume. Counselor Maglio?
Thank you. So, I want people in East Braintree to be aware of some new developments regarding clean harbors and the Four River Basin area. The Department of Environmental Protection has issued the authorization for them to continue doing all of the work that they had been doing prior to the fire in one of their trailers. I spent some time with them last week and heard about what is being required of them and what they're doing to address those requirements. And I will be sharing a lot of this information on my social media and sending it out in a newsletter, and you'll be hearing a lot about it. But I think the thing that people need to realize at this point is that there's a number of different factors at play in the Four River Basin. And those factors are that there's certain industries that have a negative impact, but they're allowed to be there and they're permitted by our state agencies and officials. And so, if our state agencies and officials are saying, "Meet this criteria," and they meet it, and we don't think that's good enough, the pressure point that we need to focus on is with the state authorities that continue to regulate these industries and allow them to have the impact they have on the place that we call home. So, there's much more to come in this chapter, there's much more to come in this story, and I encourage everyone to continue to plug in and pay attention and to reach out with any questions at either me or the mayor's office or anywhere else. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Any other announcements from counselors this evening? All right, we will, in that case, move on to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 25th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. All right, moving on to our old business for this evening, all the items on our old business are public hearings tonight. The first three, I would like to suggest, they are all on proposed zoning bylaws. I'd like to suggest, for ease of discussion purposes, because they are all related to each other, that we open each of those public hearings simultaneously so that we can discuss all three of those at once. There's no objections to that. Let me read each of those before I ask for a motion to open the public hearing. So, this is for the three zoning amendments. 23041, Braintree Planning Board, Proposed Zoning Bylaw, Text Amendment, Section 135-102. Definitions, production studio slash brewery taproom slash brewery production, or take up any action related thereto. 23042, Braintree Planning Board, Proposed Zoning Bylaw, Text Amendment, Sections 135-601. Table of principal uses, or take up any action related thereto. And 23043, Braintree Planning Board, Proposed Zoning Bylaw, Text Amendment, Section 135-806. Schedule of off-street parking requirements, or take up any action related thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for orders 23041, 23042, and 23043?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. With that, I will turn to Council Ringus, Chairman of the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, for their recommendation on these orders.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of Ordinance and Rules met last week unanimously for favorable recommendation to the full council on all of the orders that have just been opened.
Thank you very much. And I want to recognize Director Santucci-Rozzi is here with us tonight, our Department of Planning Director, and thank you for being with us tonight, Mr. Santucci-Rozzi, Director.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. As noted by the President, Melissa Santucci-Rozzi here on behalf of the department and representing the planning board this evening in their recommendation to the council as well. What I'd like to do is briefly cover the amendments, and then I can answer any questions that the committee may have. So, as noted, we did go to ordinance and rules last week and discussed the application that was submitted to the town council on May 23rd. And essentially, these amendments, while they're noticed as three separate orders, they essentially contain definitions for the following uses, which is production studio, brewery with taproom, brewery production, and then we have function and conference facility as well. So, each of those uses is defined, and then we also have provided the use table to go along with those various proposed uses. And I will start with the production studio, which noted in my report to the council, we're looking to provide for allowing the production studio use by right in the highway business and commercial districts. And we're proposing a parking requirement of one space per 700 square feet. So, we have a lot of inventory of buildings that probably are warehouses and people store things and maybe ship a little bit here and there, and looking at maybe an adaptive reuse of some of those buildings could be used for the production studio. Give a little more life to these, bring people in and out of the buildings, a little more activity, but in a good way, and hoping that the people utilizing or filming these movies or working at these studios are out spending money in the community as well. The second two definitions are somewhat companion definitions, is the brewery with taproom, which I would describe, given the example, as the widowmaker, while they produce the beverages on-site. You can also go in and enjoy the beverages, play a game, hang out with some friends, and also buy those beverages as well. And we're looking to allow for that by right in the highway business and commercial districts, and then by special permit in general business in the landing for potentially some smaller, a little more niche, even more crafty operations that could fall in line with a storefront. I gave an example last week of the Medusa, which is located in Hudson Center, and they have three storefronts. They make the beverages in two, and then they have one with some windows and seating and food as well. The second portion of that is the brewery production, which is straight-up production and maybe some small tours, no taproom, no people hanging out there drinking or eating. So, those are more set up for the highway business and commercial districts, far less customer and patriot-oriented establishments. And we are parking the production areas at one per thousand, similar to the warehouse and manufacturing. And then if there's seats, those are going to be parked at one space for every three-and-a-half seats, similar to our restaurant parking requirements. And then the fourth one is the function conference facilities, and we're looking to allow these by special permit in the highway business and commercial district. I've been in the community 20 years, even more, and always ask myself, where do people have functions here? If you don't want to go to the sans or the nights or something like that, you're looking for something, you know, maybe a baby shower, wedding shower, and remembering how much activity was at the Chard and Tara back in their heyday, and then also up at Ascari, which both of those facilities have departed from the community. For the parking requirement in this particular one, we're looking for that to be set by the planning board, and the justification and reasoning behind that is the days of the country club and the round tables with 10 people, while some people still do that, guilty. There's a lot of people that do all different kinds of things, especially for weddings, for showers, birthday parties, that are much more laid-back, I would describe, maybe even cocktail receptions and things like that. So, the ability to review these particular operations on a case-by-case basis and set the parking requirement, understanding if it's seated at a table functions, if it's cocktail-style functions, if it's a conference-style facility that has more of the classroom-style seating, where you're sitting at tables, or even something that's lecture-style, we want to be able to understand what that particular establishment is going to offer in the best way to park that facility. So, that's sort of the quick and easy on these proposed amendments. I'd be happy to cover anything else in detail or answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Santucci-Rozzi. Do any of the counselors have questions? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome, Director Santucci-Rozzi. Just, I'd like to understand the thinking on the special permit requirement for the function and conference facility under highway business and commercial? And is that tied to specifically your parking capabilities in the case of the function conference facility?
Part of it is, if I may, to Counselor Reynolds' questions, and then part of it is, again, understanding, a lot of places now offer outdoor areas as well, and with the outdoor area, music, alcohol, people celebrating, you know, those are the types of things that we want to make sure are screened properly, are buffered properly, and are maybe regulated in a little bit different manner than if something was going on inside the building. And just really trying to be able to have a little more scrutiny on the how it operates, hours of operation, and things like that, and along with setting the parking.
Thank you. I find that that's some good diligence there, and I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Reynolds, any other counselors have questions? I have two, if nobody else does. The first is, so, how did the widowmaker get permitted if this was, and this is probably just a learning opportunity for me, without the definition on the book, so to speak?
Yep. So, the widowmaker, and I don't recall the actual year, we permitted them as light manufacturing, because they were manufacturing alcoholic beverages, and there wasn't really a good one-for-one. So, we often tried to look at the operation and the workings of the operation and look at the current use table and definitions. What kind of added this to my long list of definitions that we should be looking at was, we had an inquiry from three young professionals, actually all, they either all went to Harvard or Tufts, I can't remember, but a very good school, and they loved beer, and they were looking to do something, but they wanted to do something like really small and more, and they were looking at South Braintree Square. And light manufacturing is the, was the, and that doesn't, you can't do that in the general business district. So, looking at sort of those uses and how we could separate them out for the more, we just produce alcohol and bottle it and ship it out of here, and then how can we provide for something that is maybe a little more on the industrial side, like the widowmaker, and then also provide for something that's a little more downtowny and maybe more crafty and kind of in that sort of category?
That makes a lot of sense, and I should have led with, your memo was very, very helpful, so thank you for that additional explanation, which is a good segue to my next question. So, do we have proposals for these, or are we trying to be strategic with use changes, and that's why we're adding them, or is it a mix?
Well, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody. I found out on Channel 5 that there are people looking in the community for movie studio and production, looking at Banner Park. And then we have also had some inquiries from restaurant operators that also see that void in the function market, especially now post-COVID, people want to start having the 50th birthday potties again, the showers, the, you know, getting away from doing things at home on a smaller scale. So, again, just kind of looking at what don't we have, what are people interested in, and also continually trying to, you know, when some site-finder in the middle of Texas says, signs some person, "Find me a place where I can go in Massachusetts," and they go and open up the e-code or look online, you know, the more uses that those people see and the more options just really makes us more attractive as a community that's open for business, and also thinking about the residents and things that they would like to do in their own community and support some local businesses here in the town as well.
Thank you, that's very helpful, and I'm certainly in support of this this evening, and I think it's very, you know, it'd be great to see some different uses come into town and really start opening up for, you know, new investment opportunities for people. So, thank you very much, Director, for being here tonight and answering questions. Any other questions from counselors? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the general public who wishes to speak on these zoning amendments, seeing none, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for orders 23041, 23042, and 23043?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to close the public hearing, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And we will take the votes for each of these motions separately this evening, so with that, I will ask, is there a motion for order 23041?
I'm trying to find it.
Page four in the bottom.
I'll read it. The motion to amend Section 135-102 definitions as submitted.
Is there a second? Thank you, counselors Hume and Counselor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote for 23041.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And moving on, is there a motion, excuse me, for order 23042?
Motion to amend Section 135-601 table of use as submitted.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call for 23042, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And finally, for our zoning amendments, motion for order 23043?
Motion to amend Section 135-806 schedule of off-street parking requirements as submitted.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Don't go too far, Director, for our next one. Okay. Is 23049, Mayor, CPC Appropriations, Smelt Brook Restoration Study, 2023 Addendum, FY23, CPA Application, or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing, so with that, do we have a motion to open the public hearing for order 23049?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
All right, and with that, I will turn to Counselor Reynolds, Chairman of our Committee of Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the committee in Ways and Means met and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order 23049.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reynolds. I will ask if there's anyone from the mayor's office, and would like to recognize Chief of Staff, Margaret LaForest. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Mayor, of course, I wanted to express the administration's support of this application. I want to personally thank Counselor O'Brien. I had the opportunity to spend some time in his district last week and actually look at the Smelt Brook Restoration Project area. I also want to, on behalf of the administration, thank our staunch advocates at Pond Meadow Park. We have with us Frank Collins and Brian Keefe, who have put substantial effort into this project and was quite excited to learn, this will be the first in the country. So, I think lots of us have seen fish ladders at various locations, but the Braintree-Weymouth Project for smelt restoration will be the first smelt ladder of its kind in the nation. So, great opportunity with the Army Corps of Engineers, 75% federal funding, 25% match between Braintree and Waymouth, and also our gratitude to Waymouth Mayor Headland and their community for their support of this project. Director Santucci-Rozzi is here to do a deeper dive for you and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief of Staff, and thank you to our champions of Pond Meadow Park for being with us this evening. We owe you all a debt of gratitude as well, so, one of the town's gems. Director, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. So, I think we remember a couple previous applications for this particular project. We have appropriated in 2018, $65,500, and then also we appropriated $15,000 additional for design back in 2022. So, the review that goes into the fish ladder and the construction of that, and, I should say, excuse me, the design of that, goes through multiple layers of federal review with different agencies at the federal level. And when this particular design... And when this particular design was put forward, one of these federal agencies flagged something in the design, and what it was, was that the amount of water that was now going to be coming through this area, once the ladder is installed, would in fact be higher than the wing walls that are in the structure now. So what they have decided, and one of the recommendations that's going to be go into the redesign, is that those walls get raised up three feet. And there are some diagrams in the original application that kind of put the words into pictures to get a full idea of what I'm speaking of here. So we've had multiple conversations with Pond Meadow and also the Army Corps of Engineers. Jordan Macy has been a really great partner in really breaking this down and explaining this to the local jurisdiction, not only the design piece, but then going forward, there will be a construction piece as well, that they'll be looking for some additional cost sharing on that portion as well. So this particular request is for $12,500. It is for additional design funds to make sure that we do not, while we're re-establishing the environment for the smelt habitat, we don't want to wipe out some other environments of us, you know, individuals living in homes and causing any future downstream flooding to the landing area. This request was submitted to the Community Preservation Committee, and they discussed this matter and presented a unanimous favorable recommendation to the council on behalf of Pond Meadow. And that's pretty much the short and sweet, obviously, here for any questions. I would welcome anybody to, if there's something in the materials, if they would like any follow-up, we can do our best to answer those questions as well. And I'm not sure if Breon and Mr. Collins wanted to add anything. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director. Any questions from the councilors this matter? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say, every time this comes up, we vote on funding for this project, there's been a lot of people that have worked very hard to get this project even to this point, and it's been a long battle. I want to thank Kyle Palowski, who's a member of the Four River Watershed Association in Waymouth, because he, very early on in this project, was the driving person to get this project done. And he really hung in there for a very long time to try to see this get to fruition, and more people have helped as this has gone along, and I really, I think it's a great project. I think it's, you know, when you go out and you look at some of the locations we have in town that are kind of out of sight and out of mind, like over behind Star Market and Braintree, where you go look under the bridge there and the rock formation, and how these fish have to swim upstream, it's for the fish run and where these fish ladders have to go, I think it's going to be very beneficial to the town of Braintree, and I think a lot of folks are going to get a lot of enjoyment out of this run. So I'm hoping to see it come to fruition someday, but so far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
Who else?
Counselor Maglio.
Yes, thank you. I agree and echo what Counselor Ryan said. I'd like to add to it that these are the kinds of projects, when we're talking about restoration and restoring and rejuvenating, this is what will end up eventually, hopefully, countering the decades of toxins and poisons that have been allowed to proliferate in the Four River Basin, where there is no biodiversity, where there is no eco-life, where there is no food chain, where there's really just nothing. And this changes things, and hopefully, it's the beginning of many more projects like this to come. So thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Director, do we know when the actual building might begin? I know that this has been five years, I think, or went back and...
That's a very good question, Madam President. I actually was just thinking, this is definitely going to delay things a bit. I think we were kind of on target before this happened to, like, have things start in the fall. I would need to...
Do you have that in question?
Oh, awesome. Oh, okay, so, yep, so January 2025.
Okay, so about 18 months-ish.
Yeah. From what I remember, it was going to be like October, November of this year before we had this. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of review, and then there's a lot of, like, afterwards, like, not appeal periods, but like waiting periods that are way beyond our 20-day, they're like 90 days. So there's a lot of this kind of regulatory stuff that's... Yeah, of course.
Thank you. And then in addition, we have to schedule our construction series around smelt spawning, right?
Oh, of course, yeah.
So let's be sensitive about when this gets structured. So it is a seasonal, a bit of a seasonal lag, but great opportunity to improve the fish in the Four Rivers, Counselor Maglio mentioned earlier, but keeping in mind when the fish spawn, when the construction can happen, that's going to set you back some time, yeah.
Well, thank you. We'll be looking forward to that getting underway. All right, this, any other questions from the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on order 23049 CPC appropriation? Okay, seeing none, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing?
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And with that, is there a motion for order 23049?
Yes. Motion in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 448, and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the amount of $12,500 be expended from the Open Space Fund for the Smelt Brook Restoration Study 2023 Addendum assesses MAP 3005 Plot 25, said funding to be supervised and expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director, and congratulations. We look forward to all of your new opportunities. All right, moving on to New Business this evening, Council President Powers and Sullivan Audit Review for FY 2022. So this just is an informational update for councilors, the full, and for residents, the full comprehensive financial review, CAFR, was in the council documents, and the documents are available online if residents are interested in reading it. If you have any trouble finding those documents, please get in touch with the council, and we can get those over to you. We will be hearing from Powers and Sullivan at our September meeting, but please review the materials ahead of time, and they'll be available to answer questions at our September 5th meeting. And with that, is there a motion to move all measures under New Business to the respective committees?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call for referrals.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. All right, that closes out our matters for this evening. The council is moving into our summer recess. However, we are planning to have a special council meeting on Tuesday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM to take up the appointment of the new police chief. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, right back here in Cahill Auditorium at 7:30 PM. As always, thank you so much to our B-CAM team, Bill Needham and Jerry Comack, for filming us and bringing our meetings out to the community. Is there a meeting to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call to adjourn, please.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.